On the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let the record show that all board members are present, except Deb All. And we'll move on to number four. Our board showcase tonight is adaptive bowling presentation. And welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
We have, we have the presentation.
Should be loaded, yep. My name is Brett Triplet. This is Abby Mo. We're the adaptive bowling coaches. Adaptive bowling started in Princeton in 2014. Joanne Moats and Jay Josephs began it then. Joanne was the adaptive teacher here, then the adaptive PE teacher when she got it going. I happened to have a daughter involved in it at that time, so I was there quite a bit. And I just kind of helped out. It just evolved so that when Joanne retired, I didn't want it to go away. And so it says, "Today I'll, I'll coach it." And so I've been doing that, I think about four years now. And Abby's gone and put this wonderful presentation together for us. So if you guys are ready, well, let's jump into that. So what is adaptive bowling? It's a Minnesota High School League sanctioned sport now. It's an opportunity for students with disabilities to participate in competitive athletics. The athletic participated, athletes participate in various competition formats from singles to doubles to teams. We have some, we do some score exchanges where we'll bowl here in Princeton and exchange our scores. We have some invites. Abby just took them to North Branch last Thursday. We have an invite coming up this Friday in Monticello we'll go to. And then, of course, there's the sections in the state tournament.
So we are open to grades seven through 12. And students have, there's certain criteria that they have to fit into in order to qualify for adaptive bowling. So they have to meet criteria to, to be in the divisions of either cognitive impairment, physical impairment, or autism spectrum disorder.
And a student does not need to be on an IEP to participate. They just have to have the documented disability. What are the benefits of adaptive bowling? Obviously, the socialization, participation in activity outside of the home, making connections with individuals from other schools, competition, learning a lifelong sport that they can participate even after they graduate. I'd like to go back to the making connection with individuals from other schools. If you ever get the chance, come to the state tournament. Honest to God, it is one of the neatest things you will ever experience. Because, I mean, everybody's wearing different jerseys, but it doesn't matter. Everybody cheers for everybody. Anytime somebody gets a strike, everybody's cheering for that athlete. It is just, it, it's mass chaos, but it is the best time you'll ever have in a high school event. I swear to God.
And I teach over just down the hall here in the transition program. And I have, so my students are out of the High School League adaptive bowling, but a lot of them have continued to bowl in Spelocal Special Olympics or there's an adaptive bowling league for adults in town. So a lot of them have continued that throughout their life.
So I just Googled, is it says May 12th? Does that sound right?
Yep, May 12th is the state tournament. And May 4th, I believe, is sections. It says Thursday the week prior is sections. But it is Jim Luckenhern, who worked in this district, Barb's husband, runs the state tournament. For the state of Minnesota has for many, many years. And it is, honest to God, it is just a wonderful time.
Where is it, Brett?
Brooklyn Park. Belero. Yep.
Give me that date one more time then. What was the date?
Belero. Well, May 12th.
May 12th, yep. In Brooklyn Park.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Then just a few different celebrations. So we have multiple bowlers, we've consistently had multiple bowlers qualify for the state tournament. And we've had two state champions within recent years. So that's been very exciting because there are a ton of people there. So for them to be the number one spot in their division is pretty, pretty awesome. And then just overall, the drastic improvement of athletes' skills and willingness to participate. Sometimes on day one, we're like, holy moly, this is going to be a challenge just because it's a new environment, it can be chaotic. And some athletes are hesitant to participate. But, you know, as, as the years go on and even just as, as the season goes on, we see so much improvement.
And even the picture up there, the young woman on the right there, three years ago when she started, her first game was an 11. On Thursday, she bowled a 123.
Yeah.
She bowled a 123. So you, you see huge improvement. It's just, it's a bunch of fun.
What's the season?
It starts, we usually start early March. And it goes until, like he said, May 12th is the state tournament. So it's a relatively short season. We bowl every Tuesday. And then there's several weeks where we have it twice, like this week. Last week, we had it twice, Tuesday, Thursday. This week, we'll have it twice, Tuesday, Friday. Next week, we'll have it twice because next week, we go to the Isani Invitational. So it, it varies a little.
And then we just wanted our students to be able to, our athletes to be able to have, share with you a little bit as well about what their thoughts are on bowling. So we just have a quick little video.
This is great.
We're meeting new people, of course bowling and having fun and cheering people on. It's really fun, especially when we travel. Especially really fun when we go to state.
Meeting more friends.
Teth?
Your shirt?
Yeah.
You like your bowling shirt? Awesome.
Sport I enjoy, really. It's at my level.
I think people can learn about teamwork, being positive during even one day is can get tough. And being a good sport.
Well, what you can learn is just, well, having fun, really, that's, yeah.
Go Tigers!
Go Tigers!
Ha, ha, ha!
Go Tigers!
They're a really fun group. Maybe I'd love to have double that, but, you know, we just take the athletes we can get. And, but they're, they're a lot of fun. They're a good group.
How often do you practice?
Every Tuesday. Either have a practice or a score exchange. And then, like I said, we have the other invites throughout. So sometimes Tues, uh, Thursdays, sometimes Fridays. We tried to set up our own. Princeton Bowling is wonderful to work with, but it's not real conducive for wheelchair athletes because they need to, there's a big step they gotta go down and it's kind of tight lanes. I tried to work out an invitational with Zimmerman this year because it's very good for wheelchairs, a lot of room, easy accessibility. They just would not work with us at all. I mean, they just fought us on everything. And I was, Zimmerman started their own bowling league this year. And I happened to be talking to the coach about that. And he said the same thing, that he's having a hard time dealing with them. I don't know why. It would have been a real good thing for them, a lot of exposure. You know, we were going to have three teams, probably what, 75, 80 people with support staff and parents. And so it would have been great exposure for them, but everything we brought up, they just fought us on. So we just said, "Oh, can't do it." Yeah.
Do you travel a lot?
Not a lot.
Different alleys?
This year, we went to North Branch. We'll be going to, Monticello throws a wonderful tournament every year. Ever since I've been involved with it, they have, at McPete's in Big Lake. Isani, they stopped during COVID, it's Cambridge, I'm sorry, but they do it in Isani. And so we'll go to that next week. And then sections are in Monticello this year. And then, of course, the state tournament in Brooklyn Park. Yep.
We started to do a little more traveling now, but things have even doubled a little bit. With COVID, it was all score exchanges. But it's also during the school day a lot of times, our, our competitions. So we can't have like too many.
Right. Yeah. Because a number of these kids have special transportation and need to have that to get home. And so even when we travel, we're home by 1:30, 2 o'clock, we're back at the respective buildings.
That's so awesome.
Yeah, they're, they're a bunch of fun. Anna's the cheerleader. She loves cheering for everybody and she just has a blast.
She is my favorite choir member.
I can see.
Every concert.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, yep.
Is there, there's not a limit? I mean, you could have more kids on a tour?
I would love to have 20. That'd be awesome.
Yeah, we can have, yeah.
Yeah, we, when we go to state tournaments, some of those teams have 20, 30 kids. When you, you know, you're coming out of the city, some of the bigger schools, they have a lot more kids, yeah. So I would love to have more. That'd be awesome. I sent out, we were trying to get more and I actually, I wrote 10 letters to parents that have kids who weren't involved. Trying to get new ones to come on. I went to the different case managers of God's name and say, "Who do you think might be interested?" And so I wrote letters and I followed up with a second letter. And we got three new ones out of those 10, so that's pretty good, that hadn't been in it before.
And you might have said this, but what, what age level? The middle level?
Seventh, eighth, and then through 12th grade. So they can actually participate for six years.
So when we recruit and we're trying to get into the middle, middle school?
All our new ones were middle schoolers. Yep, all three of our new ones were middle schoolers.
I just had a quick question on the accessibility in Princeton. Are they willing to work with us at all?
It would be major construction to, in order to do that.
We've had students in the past that are in a wheelchair and they made kind of a makeshift, like they're, they're willing to try. But it's just, and so like, but it's going in the back door, like going up a little. They've built a little like ramp thing up the back for us and stuff. But to host many people in wheelchairs at one time, coming in through the back door probably just wouldn't be ideal. So.
It's, it's tight when you get in wheelchairs and ramps and aids and it's just too crowded to do that there. No, they're wonderful to work with. They've done everything they can to, to work with us. They really have.
I figure.
Yep.
That's just how they are.
Yep, yep.
Is there anything that you need or want that we should be aware of?
I mean, I think if you get us more kids, I'd like. But other than that, I mean, we just got new jerseys. Ella, what's Ella's last name again?
No.
Ella now, her mom gave us a $500 donation. And those jerseys you see there, we got those a year, a year or two years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. So we just bought those two years ago using that $500 donation from her, the snowmobile club that she belongs to. So no, I mean, I think, you know, we got the things we need, the physical things we need. It would just be nice to have a few more participants. The parents we work with have all been wonderful and, yeah, you know.
And I think it'll just be us more working, continuing to work with the case managers because we rely on case managers to get the information out, out to the families and things. So just, you know, working on that process.
So then you guys have a year-end banquet then too, or?
We, after, at our last practice, we, we bring a cake and we have awards. We get old bowling pins from the bowling alley. And we write on like most improved, highest score, most pins. And so that's their trophies or the old bowling trophies. And then we hand out their letters. They letter, just like any other sport now. So if they participate enough, they get a letter. And so we do that at the bowling alley in the little banquet type area they got there.
That's so awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. We really appreciate it. And maybe you'll see a few of us at the state tournament. I promise you, you'll have fun. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We'll move on to number five. There are no students comments. And we'll move on to school board committee reports, starting with Melissa.
We did public engagement today and I think that's it. I had agenda planning. And then I attended a C Executive Board meeting on Friday. And just some interesting discussion there of looking at the organization's goals for equity and education and the relevance of that group. And maybe talking about, is there ways to make that group more relevant to, I think there's some, there wasn't a lot of movement in equity in this legislative session. And so the group is looking at like their effectiveness. And the executive director has one more year, so there'll be exploring a new executive director. So that organization is experiencing some growing pain or some changes in there. And then we also had community engagement. And we talked about the two-sided mailer that came in everyone's mailbox. Hopefully you had a chance to see that. And then there was also a section on the board in the community ed brochure as well. If you haven't seen that online or that went to every household as well. There's a section on the board there. And so we had a lot of discussion about some other things that we can do to improve our engagement with the community in some ways. We have a school board scholar banquet coming up. And then we had some discussion about whether we should do staff recognition. We've done a luncheon in the past. How might we change that? Maybe a less expensive option since we're looking at reduction. So some of that conversation, that's why I think we'll eventually come to the board. Chad?
I, I had the agenda planning and that's about it for me.
Uh, no reports.
I had no one report.
Okay. All right, we have no student council report. Superintendent Barton?
Winnie did reach out to me. She's in track, I believe. So there's an event, there's an event. So that's where she felt bad about that, but told her not to feel bad. And that's a priority for her, for sure. You know, we, we had a large committee work on hiring of a new high school principal. That's on the agenda for the official hire. We got about 40 people involved with that. A very difficult decision, but we're very happy. We will begin the process of hiring an assistant principal as well at the high school. So that, that will be quite a large change after having strong, the same administration there for a decade plus, right? So that will be a, a transition for sure. Tomorrow morning, I have a coffee meeting with Bob Indhar. And he's coming to Princeton to meet with me. And he is the executive director of MRAEA. And I believe that you all should get their emails on a regular basis. Bob and I have known each other for a while. And I, I, it was pretty cool for him to be able to make the trip to speak directly with me. So I'll let you know how that goes. I'm going to really pick his brain. He might have some insider information on some of the legislation that is, I guess, of concern of ours. Specifically, you know, funding related to possible unemployment benefits. Not that we're opposed to unemployment benefits, but we have concerns in terms of how we would fund that. So that's something that when I get additional information, that will be helpful. Today in our admin PLC, we focus on, you know, some areas of, that we may be missing as it relates to positive climate and culture in our schools where all of our students feel safe, respected, and like they belong. We, we feel very proud of being a national leader in positive behavior interventions and supports and building in social, emotional learning standards and our habits of a tiger in our curriculum design. But we still feel like there's some, something missing, like how can we do more? And we are, we are trying to learn more about a concept of just restorative practices in schools, ways for when individuals or groups may have conflict in any way. How do you resolve conflict? Just by talking and talking it out, if you will. So we're, we're learning more about some of that. And we have some plans that are at end of the year, summer admin retreat to get more staff development on that. We're, we're plan, a lot of planning for next year, right? Budgeting, staffing, master schedules at, at sites, preparing for handbooks, those kinds of things. Staff, all staff development for all of our team members to bring back next, next fall. So just a lot of things happening. And, and we are going to be meeting with staff on Friday related to anyone impacted on some budget reductions. So that's always a, a difficult day. You know, we're, we've worked really hard to have as little impact as possible for our team members. But it is impossible to not have some. And we also are hiring some positions as well. Like there's some positions that we have open that we don't have any licensed staff to transition into. An example would be like our high school, our teaching position that's open now, so. I guess I'll end my report unless you have any specific questions you'd like to ask me. Activities, I just say, it was, it's nice to be able to have some teams be able to play at night. So.
They were shoveling snow off the baseball fields.
Yep. Austin, probably most every other school in the Midwest has been dealing with that. So we're going to work our hardest to get all the, you know, all the games in, in the little bit of time that we have.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to approving the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melissa, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. To assess an act on previous board meeting from 3/21 and April 4, is there a motion to approve a minute? Motion made by Eric Minx, is there a second? Second by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Don, is there a second? Second by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. In the information section of our meeting number 10, we have legislative update.
You know, I, I guess the, the pieces that I think we should be most aware of is that it does appear that we will be receiving, we hope at least 4% on the formula. And we do believe that the cross subsidy will be an area that will be addressed. It's yet to be determined if that would be at 40% or at like 47 and a half percent. There are some provisions in, in some of the bills related to increased counselors or mental health support. And we need to analyze, you know, what does that mean? If that means to, that funding must only be used for new staff or if it could be used to subsidize existing staff. So those will be decisions and things we'll have to look at as well. I do believe that there's some provisions related to media centers in, in the bills as well. So lots of support. The, the major, major concern is the mandates that will cost money. So it's very deceiving to say that, you know, we're going to provide this level of increased funding, but then tell us exactly how that needs to be spent. So that's the biggest worry that everybody has on their mind right now is this idea of the unemployment benefits for hourly nine-month employees. So we are running, like I mentioned before, some simulations in terms of what that cost could be to the district. And depending on, you know, which projections we put in, it could be anywhere from $400,000 in increased expenditures to $600,000 or $800,000. So our, our message to our legislators would be that we need some dollars to support this kind of legislation. And that's the biggest wondering and worry that we have right now. Because if that were to happen, you know, it, if you remember when we did our budget projections, we put in the 4% increase, but we didn't put in the cross subsidy. So we would be able to add the cross subsidy to our projection, which would be very helpful. But then we would have to, in turn, add the expenditure side of things, which would likely be the unemployment benefit. So, you know, you all probably receive emails daily from MRAEA, C, and MSVA that would just ask you to take the time to read those, be engaged. And we will likely need to have a push at the end to make sure our message is out. And I, I'll receive a lot more information tomorrow, as I mentioned, because I'll be able to pick MRAE's, bring in a little bit more to see where we should focus our energies.
Is the negotiating capability of class size still on the table or has that gone away?
Yes, that is, that, thank you for bringing that up. That is also something that, you know, the devil's in details, right? I mean, is it just you have to talk about it at the negotiating table? Or do you have to agree on, you know, what that is, what those parameters would be? Which then, you know, ultimately, and we've talked about this. Every time that there's a mandate of any kind, that takes away local control from local school boards to make those decisions. You do this every year. You set the parameters for class size. And we do our due diligence in comparing ourselves to all the other school districts across the state and take a look at the budget impacts, what that would be. You know, if that's, if there's some legislation regarding that takes that control away from you. Or at the very least, it would put you in a position to collectively bargain what that would be. Just would bring more complexities to the whole process. But I know Jason and his HR groups, they're spending a lot of time analyzing that. And I know MSBA has been heavily invested in that issue as well. Because I think the school boards association really, at one of their founding foundational priorities is local school board control. Right, and last mandates. So I believe that the session ends, what, like, end of May? 22nd?
All right, are there any other legislative questions? All right. We'll move on then to 10B, so first reading of policy. And the summary changes are there. Don was not at that meeting. We, we were, yeah. I don't.
I think the only thing that, that is worth mentioning is that there's a new policy in there. And that's related to overdose medication. And that is something that MSBA newly created and designed for school boards.
And then there were a few there that are also sent to Jessica to review as well. So if you have any further questions about those before we would act on those at the next meeting. Move on to the action item of 11A as a resolution relating to the bond, the facilities maintenance bond. And I think we have some more information about that. Yes, so I have the sale day report. Do they have that or do you want?
Oh, we got it today. I sent them the email that you sent me, but if you want to go over the highlighted items?
I will do that. So we got great results today. And if you look at the first page, it summarizes the purpose and some of the highlights. So these, these bonds are financing deferred maintenance projects that you have in your tenure plan as approved by the commissioner of education. We did go through the rating process and Michelle participated in that. And they did affirm your underlying rating of AA3, which is a nice high rating. And then you also get the state credit enhancement rating at AA1. So nice to see that. You got five bids today. The winning bidder was BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee at about a 2.75% rate. So you'll see a summary of the results in the middle of the page there. But the notes then show that at the beginning of March, we were estimating a rate of 3.63 because rates had been increasing. And we wanted to put a little cushion in, not knowing where rates would go. And in fact, they've come down. So happy to see that happening, even though the Federal Reserve keeps increasing rates. We've had a lot of demand for municipal bonds and that's what's really been driving the rate down. So also, we got a higher premium than we were expecting. We never know what that's going to be until the day of sale. But that allowed us to deposit $281,000 more to your construction fund, which I know makes Michelle happy because there's lots of projects that could be used with these dollars. So tonight, your action is to adopt the resolution that was prepared by your bond attorney. And you should have that also. I'll just touch on the attachments. The first attachment to the sale day report is our bid tab. So it gives a little bit more information about each of the five bids that we received. So again, BOK, that true interest. So again, BOK, that true interest cost rate of about 2.75%. FHN Financial Capital Markets out of Memphis was next at 283, Baird out of Milwaukee at 285, Hilltop Securities from Dallas at 295, and then Northland out of Minneapolis was just under 3%. So all really great bids and all of them below what we were expecting. The next schedules are the exact same schedules that we talked about, um, when I joined your meeting on March 7th. Someone was away at a fun, yes, I remember that. So, um, so I was virtual, you were virtual and we went through these schedules, uh, at the March 7th meeting. They're just updated now with the results from the sale today. So attachments, page two is our sources and uses schedule showing that larger premium, the larger deposit to the construction fund. The next page is the detailed debt service schedule. Page four is a, a summary of your long-term facilities maintenance revenue, the calculations of those, the aid and the levy that you receive as part of that formula, the existing bonds that you have in that program already, these new bonds and that what you'll have remaining for other projects. Um, this, uh, these bonds do not cause an increase in property taxes because you're using your existing long-term facilities maintenance revenue to make the debt service payments. So you get, um, money each year under this program. You can use it for pay-as-you-go projects out of your general fund or you can issue bonds like you're doing tonight, tackle some of those larger projects and pay them back over time. So that is what is showing up on page four. And then the next two documents are the reports that we got from the rating agency. So the first report is their press release that starts on page five of the attachments and goes through page 10. And then they also give you a detailed credit opinion and that starts on page 11. Page 12 of that document includes some key indicators and statistics about trends in the district over time as compared to comparable rated districts. And that, um, then goes through the end of the report. So that is everything I have. Happy to answer any questions and I have the proposal form for the chair and clerk to sign, um, at the end of the meeting too.
Any questions? So I think all good news. So that, uh, so they just need, we need a, a motion and a second and then I think this is a roll call.
All right. So, uh, would someone like to entertain a motion, read the motion and?
I'll move to accept the resolution related to $3 million general obligation facilities maintenance bond series 2023A, authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details and providing for the payment thereof as presented.
Motion made by Eric Minx, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melissa, is there any further discussion?
I think it's just, it's important to, to pick out the detail of this isn't increasing our tax payers.
Hearing none, we will both by roll call, starting with Eric Strandberg.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sue, yes? Eric?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Uh, there are no additions to the agenda. Future meetings are listed there with, um, finance at the net, before the next meeting. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Eric Minx, say goodbye Chad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right, thanks.